That is great. Heavenly Father, please help us through these difficult times. The whole country going through some very, very unusual times and it don't want to get any better. Please help us every day and help us make good decisions in this commissary court to even help the situation even more. Uh, God bless you. Amen.
Welcome everybody to our break of the weekend. We do have two second commissioners for reading for the record of Judge Shoehart on the time. And Commissioner for the District of Big Bay, David Lynch, with my name here. So we're gonna get started. We should do five lines of two. Discussing a possible action approval of people eleven, three years and twenty seven thousand.
Well, I'll second that.
Motion second. Although the papers say aye.
Aye.
And then this is who? What's the carriers? Item number three, discussing a possible action approval of personnel actions.
Hi, there's a long address. This is my husband. He's a regulars being in town. Second from the Santa, Saint Anthony. She's from Vermont, Utah, in town. Saint Anthony, look here. She's coming from a town change. The next one, I have five. She is born in town. This is changing to the correct. New and hard, she can use the problem under the high and low review and everything by eight. Redden Nation, where it's a solid from where the P O. The word down and then across on the first. Junior Lee, he introduced him to this one. Madam Moore, she's for this one. Here it is for the back of the page in the matter. Fiona, Jake, Commissioner, the previous board of existence.
Motion second in your discussion. Although the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then four, discussing a possible action approval of the May nineteen thousand. And then five, discussing a possible action approval of light out of the train.
Uh, first one's for festival buildings. Moving twenty thousand out of capital outlay into repair maintenance building. A hundred out of capital outlay into repair maintenance equipment. Four thousand from contract labor to general supplies. And then precinct two, one. Thirty thousand out of contract labor into contract road repairs. Hundred and forty thousand out of contract labor into repair maintenance material. And then, I'm sorry, that last one was for the special.
Special road tanks.
Special road tanks. This next one is for precinct two. Five thousand out of contract labor into road repairs. Four thousand out of contract labor into salinas. Thousand out of contract labor into equipment. And another contract labor into repair maintenance equipment. And then we have one for precinct one. Removing sixty thousand out of vision nerves. Uh, forty thousand going into view and lubricates and then twenty thousand into repair maintenance vehicles.
And I'll second that.
Motion second in your discussion.
Yes, just let everybody know there was no money added. We just moved it from one line to another line.
As for all of you who are like. Although the papers say aye. Motion carries. Item number six, discussing a possible action approval of the campaign.
Yeah, that's um, we're down on the world. We're moving to the control of the A D. When I'm on the.
So you uh, talk to her right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So as I said, Google, you have on the free right.
Yeah.
I'll make the approval accountable. We're bringing that down. Second, before four children, six two funds, eight two twelve.
I'll say that.
Motion second in your discussion. Although the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, discussing taking possible action on approval of this first request since the last committee's court.
If it's a little year, they have a lot of them.
I'll move the approval first.
I'll also.
Motion second, although the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, eight and nine, you have not the new stretch report. Table item eight and nine, which brings ten and visitors something common. Do you have anybody who's signed up for that? Okay, that has been said. We will adjourn and do the meeting at twelve. Welcome everybody to our ten o'clock session. I don't think we ever thought that we built this room too small, but appreciated everybody coming. If y'all probably wants to squeeze in and make room for those that are standing, that'd be great. Um, I know a lot of y'all are here for agenda item number three and just want to make it clear that when that's over, we've got probably twenty more agenda items. We'd love to have you here for all of those, but if you feel like you want to leave back to that point, you're more than welcome to if you're coming here for just one agenda item. So for the record, Judge Shoehart is not present today and so precinct three commissioner David Lynch is moderating the meeting. And also for the record, how about them cowgirls? Just thought I'd mention that. Didn't mention it at the nine o'clock meeting because I wanted some people here to be able to applaud when I said something. So anyway, congratulations to them and parents and family members in the school system. So.
What did they do, Dave?
They won the state championship in softball yesterday. And I can't, I've lost track of with COVID, what the, what the series of events was that, I don't know what we did last year or whether it was the year before that that they won the baseball and softball. Some of you DeHennes people can remind me. I know that yesterday.
Nineteen, they won baseball and softball. Twenty was COVID. Uh, last year the girls won silver in softball and won gold yesterday.
Okay, so we're, that's, that's Dynasty kind of talk. So. And we would have won it in twenty had it not been for COVID. Probably both of them. So anyway, enough of that. Welcome to everybody that's here. Glad y'all are here. Um, we're gonna begin with item number eleven, which is discuss and take possible action on proclaiming the month of June is elder abuse awareness month. And I believe we have some ladies over here.
Yes.
Are y'all here to speak on that behalf or just here as representatives? I, I will read the proclamation if y'all don't mind. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. And whereas as we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. And whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a community concern affecting thousands of people across Texas. And whereas abuse affected more than one hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred eight older adults and people with disabilities in Texas in two thousand twenty-one. And whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly under-reported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And whereas adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds, and all communities. And whereas elder abuse is everyone's business, it's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. Now, therefore being resolved that the commissary's court of the county of Medina hereby recognize and proclaims month of June two thousand twenty-two to be elder abuse awareness month in Medina County, Texas, and urge all residents to work together to reduce abuse and neglect of older adults and people with disabilities. Witness our signatures and seal of office. Thank y'all very much for the work y'all do and yes, I, I admit I was not aware of the elder abuse issue. So this is elder abuse awareness month. Would you like a picture?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do we have an official one of these to sign also, Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay. If y'all would like to come up here, up in front.
What is it saying? It's a department of damage and safety services, adult tech.
I, I thought it was DeHennes teachers.
That's what I thought too.
Y'all in front and we'll stand here behind you.
Thank you. Hang on just a moment. Let me look at what I've got. I'll let you know if I need to do anything.
We, we can't look any better.
Can I have a card so that I can find.
Here you go. You'll put this up there?
And send you the photo and you can tell me who you are from left to right. Perfect. From birth, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ma'am.
The other simple proclamation I have been telling you, I'll scan it in. I'm not sure who sent it to us, but we can. I'll send it back to her. Thank you. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number twelve, which is update on Belong, a division of S J R C Texas and lead provider for community-based care for region eight B. Is Ms. Cody here? Thank you.
Good morning. Howdy commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm Nicole Cody. I'm the community liaison for an agency called Belong. Um, Belong is the agency that is responsible for implementing community-based care across to the twenty-seven counties surrounding Bear County. I came back in October to introduce the agency and I'm here to give you some updates on the work we've been doing the last few months. Um, as community-based care progresses and stages, removing the responsibility of foster care placement, case management, um, and services from the state level to belong. And so it's moving from the top back down to the communities themselves. Um, we started back in April of two thousand twenty-one. We implemented our stage one in October twenty twenty-one. And currently we're in the process of moving to stage two. So stage one was just solely focused on the intake and placement of foster care placements in our region. And stage two, we're going to be complete case management of kinship and foster care placements. Um, with our, our priority, our goals are to always keep children with their family members if it's safe to do so and to try to keep them in their community. Um, the goal is within fifty miles of their home community if it's safe to do so. So since launching, um, nearly seventy percent of our children, um, in these twenty-seven counties have been able to be placed within a foster home or residential operation within our region. So that's very good. Um, our other goal is that, um, our youth are placed in the most home-like setting to, um, because we know that children thrive in those situations versus a group home. Um, of these youth in our network, seventy-seven percent of our paid placement days, um, have been spent in a family-like setting. So this is with a foster parent in a home. Um, and this is since October. Um, our, our third goal is to minimize the number of placements, um, because every time a child is removed, it's causing more trauma. Um, and so since then, we've had to, um, we've participated in mitigation, mitigation staffings with D F P S and other agencies for twenty-one youth whose discharge notices have been submitted, and that's for foster and kinship. And out of those fourteen, we were able to help them, um, get the resources they need to rescind those notices. So the children were able to stay in those placements. Um, to do that, we utilize our local resources and the agencies that we have in our communities. Um, we also try to bring in, um, other agencies that can do virtual sessions, especially out in our rural areas where it's difficult to get to them. Um, we have a prevention, our own prevention department, um, parents' teachers and care programs starting in June, right, next week. I'll be going through the training so I can provide parent education to our families, um, in Medina County and beyond. Um, so we can hopefully try to prevent children from entering care to begin with. Um, our, one of our other goals has been to engage the community for their support, for their, to support their children and their families locally. Um, and that's mostly where I work in as the community liaison. I work to establish our presence and educate the community as well as the need for our foster care and adoption needs. Um, we currently have roughly about sixty-five children from Medina County in foster care. Um, we have seventeen active foster homes in our county and that's as of April. Um, so there's not enough homes currently to take in all of our children that are coming into care from Medina County. Um, to create, increase this capacity, I work with churches, community events. I'm trying to support the families that we do have so they know they're not isolated, they're not alone. Um, having groups sponsor appreciation baskets forum and about for Valentine's Day and for main for foster care awareness. I hosted a child abuse prevention lunch and wine series throughout the month of April. Um, and just constantly trying to utilize local agencies and to support our families for support, trying to reach out to outside of. Um, as we go into, oh, and we always continue to work with the D F P S by partnering with them. We get to know their staff. We need to assist them with transportation, hospital shifts at the hospital, helping them stock their resource rooms, um, throughout the area. In stage two, so probably the fall, we're looking at October, we will be responsible for the entire case management, like I said, for foster and kinship cases. Um, we will need to nearly double our staff size. So we're hosting hiring affairs this month. Um, we're, we, we want our D F P S caseworkers to join our forces. Um, and the community and all the ways that we can, um, we're actually hosting one in Hondo, I think on the twenty-ninth at the D F P S office. Um, and we work really well with those stuff. Um, most of us do work remotely, so that will continue in stage two. Um, but in stage two, one of the things that we are actively seeking is a place for, um, our parent-child visits to happen. Our family coordination meetings to happen because we, because we are remote right now, we don't have, um, space. Um, I don't have an office to go to in Hondo, Medina County, and nobody wants to drive to my home in my goat way out there to come to me. But, um, our future plans are to open up a family resource center in specific areas and specifically in our nine county west area that I'm part of. We are so ruled divided out that we, me and my regional director Kelly Dalton are really striving to get one and, um, I was like, Hondo, Uvalde, Del Rio, Eagle Pass, Corizo, Los City. So, um, that's the long-term plan. But if, and I, there's lots of school districts in this room right now. Do you hear me? We definitely need a space. We need to save space so our children, families can continue to meet and, um, we can get their continued services as we can progress through. So just wanted to give you that update. Um, as Medina County, um, foster mom myself, I am working very hard for the county and the families that live here and I'm very passionate about my job and I appreciate your time and willingness to listen to these.
Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate your work and your, and the update.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner, did we take action on item eleven?
Uh, we did not. So we need to have a motion and a second to proclaim the month of June is elder abuse awareness month.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
I'll third that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Edward. Item number thirteen, discussion regarding adding a school resource officer at each school in Medina County. Let me preempt this item by saying, just reminding everybody that this is not an action item. It is an agenda item so that we can hear your concerns and, and, and maybe have a little dialogue, but there will be no action taken at this meeting today. I know Judge Shoehart would like to be involved in this, in this discussion also, and he's not present. So. But with that having been said, I will give the floor, I believe, to Eric Smith, who's gonna be the spokesman. If this, if that's how you'd like to operate.
Good morning commissioners. I'll leave each one of you known me, but for those in the audience that do not, my name is Eric Smith. Superintendent for Natalia I S D and a lifelong resident, a proud lifelong resident of Medina County. Had the honor of living in precinct four, then to precinct three and I'm back to precinct four. I will speak publicly on which commissioner slightly easier to approach. It may not intimidate you. One is carrying a gun. Uh, appreciate you along with Judge Chris Shoehart allowing me to be on the agenda today to speak about a very important topic, school safety. I'm here representing not only Natalia I S D, which I have the honor of serving alongside our superintendent Harry Piles, but we also have our friends from DeHennes I S D led by Board President Clay Bill and Superintendent Brian Thompson. Hondo I S D led by Board Vice President Matt Roden and Superintendent Ms. Aileen Trulock. Medina Valley I S D led by Board President Fez Zinsmeyer and Superintendent Ken Barbock. Divine I S D led by Board President Ms. Nancy Pepper and Superintendent Todd Brangie. And last but not least, our friends from Lidl, which have a junior high school in Medina County led by Board President Leanna Mast and Superintendent Michelle Carroll Smith. Uh, I will ask if you were part of any of the school districts I've just mentioned with administration of school members. If you'll stand, please. Uh, and others who are saying, and if you're a parent, invite any of those individuals to stand. Thank you. I was happy when I reached out to each of those six districts which represent Medina County's six public schools, which educate twelve thousand children and over two thousand staff members. They were in full support of my hearing. When you look at the six districts here before you today, the largest, of course, is Medina Valley, that there were seventy-five hundred children at eight different campuses, six of which currently have a school resource officer paid for by Medina Valley I S D. Hondo I S D has one police officer funded by the school district and one is locally funded by the city of Hondo, which assists in their safety. They also have the guardian program in their school district. Divine I S D has one officer currently funded by their district and he is from the city of Divine. They also have the guardian program. DeHennes I S D has the guardian program, but keep in mind, as you know, they're not, they do not have a police department. And they're an incorporated, not currently a Catholic school resource officer. I will add though, I wouldn't want to step on their campus because those boys and girls seem to bat. Congratulations to the cowgirls on their second state title. Natalia I S D currently has one police officer funded by the district who works for Natalia P D to assist with safety. Last but not least, Lidl I S D has one Medina County sheriff's deputy, which is funded by the district at a cost, according to Michelle Smith, at sixty thousand dollars per year to assist with safety. Once again, this is a piece of the puzzle and I will not go into individual safety plans for each of the school districts as if we were to reveal those, they're no longer a safety plan. I can assure you though, they are looking at numerous ways to continue to add safety as they've done the last five years and plus. Uh, I will pass out letters from each of the superintendents and the districts that I mentioned, showing our unity and what we're requesting today. And of course, I won't go into anything, but I will pass out just in case, I know some of you, the only others out of the county, I don't know if you pick up our local blind paper. But showing the front page headlines and range from everything, from two point two million, uh, that was made in purchases by the county to President Joe Biden in Uvalde for a tragic event, all the way to our school district cabinet cancel our last week's school due to safety concerns. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I now will continue to support each of you on the county commissioner's court because I believe you have and continue to do what is in the best interest of this county. I will not throw out fancy stats or figures when it comes to school shootings in the U S R U Valley. I'm pretty sure each of us are aware and it makes us, at least me, sick to my stomach to continue to turn on the news. I personally know two of the first responders who were there who were also fellow trustees. One in Uvalde I S C I S D and one in Dilly I S D, who was a state trooper who had the order to have to go into that elementary. What I will do is ask one simple request. I will add that this is the second time that you have seen me before you. Uh, two years ago I came and I requested that you would consider looking into possibly doing some type of tax reduction to offset appraisals that we know you do not control. But to try and offset that, which y'all didn't make the decision at the time in the best interest of the county not to go forth with doing a tax reduction. Or lowering the tax rate, I should say. I want to commend you on being good stewards of our tax dollars as I read the amount of money, which was over four million dollars that you put into your fund balance. With the continued residential and commercial growth mainly in precinct two, I know there's huge subdivisions going in precinct four and all over the county. We know this fund balance will only realistically, if y'all being good stewards, continue to grow. I cannot put a price tag on life and each district is working our own manner to see what else we can do to assure student safety. The only request I have is, will you be willing to fully fund one additional officer for each of the school districts in Medina County, which is a total of six? I realize that if you go off the costs that you're currently charging Lidl I S D, which is sixty thousand dollars, that would equal around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And of course, that's without vehicle expenses, I understand. I have spoken to each of you prior to putting this on the agenda, Judge Chris Shoehart, Sheriff Randy Brown, Chief Deputy Gilbert Rodriguez, and many others. As being the president of our court, I never like to be blindfolded on an agenda item, so I would expect that I would expect myself. I was assured by Sheriff Brown and Rodriguez that they did not feel this was a fabric waste for one that they did not support. I realize you're in the middle of budget planning as each of our districts are as well. I will not today nor in the future criticize the decision that you as a commissioner's court made today in reference to my request. I would just ask you to remember the fifty-one thousand residents in our county that have twelve thousand relatives attending schools and over two thousand staff members that unfortunately love the back of our backs to try and protect. Once again, I'm not going to further stash response times, possible tragic scenarios or any other things having to do with requests as I believe each of you are familiar with what took place in Uvalde and the reality that we never thought it could happen in Uvalde and we hope heaven forbid it could ever happen in Medina County. I will conclude by saying this. To my knowledge, school districts in our county have never approached this commissary's court asking for assistance. I do not believe that what we are asking for is a luxury, but I believe it's a necessity. And your support would be, would not be the end-all solution to assure all of our children their safety on a daily basis. And it would not guarantee children would not be in harm's way. But in the end, I believe it's a piece of the puzzle that would show a great partnership with the county, the cities mentioned above, and the school districts. I also believe this is an item that is well within what you can afford as a county budget. But at the end, the final decision will lie within the four of you, along with your budget committee, Judge Shoehart, and Sheriff Randy Brown. At this time, I'll ask the vice president of Medina Valley I S D and Medina County President Ms. Beasley if she'll come forward and conclude. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for entertaining us today. Um, Mr. Brown, thank you so much for, um, the partnership that we have and deputies that we have. We do have six S R Os on our campuses. As you know, we're one of the ten fastest growing school districts in the state of Texas. And as a community, uh, I grew up in Uvalde. Um, everyone involved is a friend. It hits deeply and, um, is what we as trustees and stewards of our students and our stakeholders, it's a worse nightmare scenario. But, uh, as a district in Medina Valley, in two thousand eighteen, we set it as a board goal to focus on safety. And as Mr. Smith, uh, mentioned, we don't discuss safety because that violates our plan. So all I can say is we have had a very strong focus on it as other districts have. We are unique in our size and our location and our growth, but nonetheless, all districts within Medina County can use help. And as he also mentioned, this is. And as he also mentioned, this is not an end-all, this is exactly what he said, one piece of the puzzle, but anything that we can do to add one more person, we've learned a lot as we're peeling apart Uvalde and I just want to reiterate that I stand in support of every person who has been involved because unfortunately, what media often portrays is not the whole story as we, any of us elected officials know that often things happen that we can't talk about. And so I appreciate that school district and support them so much. But from our standpoint, we would just ask that as we're all in budget time, all of us are looking at our budgets and as we are a growing district, we would like for you to consider it and certainly knowing we're not taking action today, if there is a suggestion by Sheriff Brown, any of y'all, we're open to discussions on how we can do this and how we can help. But it's, we'd love a roundtable, we'd love any opportunity to continue to discuss to see what we can do together to, for the sake of all stakeholders, because we want our kids safe. Thank you all.
Do y'all have any questions of us, or any of the administrators in the room? No questions necessarily. We've got one more person that I'd like to let speak before we, before we open that up if y'all are all right for that. Let's just have Mr. Art Flores, a quick if you'd like.
Thank you, Commissioners, for making the time with me this morning. I have time in front of you to echo some sentiments that have been said this morning and I'll let you introduce myself humbly and my organization as another alternative and layer of security to these schools. We offer a unique solution that has been deployed in public private charter schools across the state and I'd love an audience with the county Commissioners to introduce their product and discuss budgeting and donating what we've done across the state.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody have any comments that they'd like to make?
I'll, I'll speak a little bit and I don't speak for everybody on the court, but I'll, I'll tell you that the county's fund balance was mentioned and appreciate that being noticed. It's not an accident, the Commissioners Court that you have in front of you is very purposeful in budgeting conservatively and Randy can tell you and other department heads can tell you that come budget time, when they come in here with their requests, they don't always leave as happy as we'd like them to. We'd like to have an unending supply of money to, to fund everything that every department head wants in order to perform their jobs. Precinct three road commissioner, same way. Those of y'all that live in precinct three that are fortunate to live on a nicely paved road, you know what I'm talking about, that it wasn't always that way. There's a lot of you that don't have that luxury. So yeah, we've always, we were always looking for extra funds and extra money. The fund balance is very important. I know that as school board members, you, you experience times of, of, of not necessarily excess, but where your budget looks really good and you know that through circumstances that you can't control, sometimes that goes away very quickly and you're laying people off and you're looking for funds to support the things that you want to do for the students. So I know that y'all understand that and, and school budgeting is a, is a complicated thing with the state involved and what they mandate that you guys do. So we understand that. So I'm just saying that to, to let you know that we're not saying no to anything, but, but our fund balance in the shape that it's in is very important to the Commissioners that you have in front of you. And so figuring out a way to, to meet your needs and desires without affecting that is going to be something that we'll have to work through. You can do a one-time thing with a fund balance, but an SRO officer is an ongoing expense. It's that, that revenue flow is going to have to come from somewhere and it's going to be the taxpayers that fund that ultimately so that our fund ballot doesn't, balance doesn't disappear completely. So those are all things to think about and we, you know, I'm all for having a workshop or a roundtable if you'd like and, and look at different, different ways that we can attack this. We're, we're all Medina County school products. Our wives are Medina County school products, our children are, our grandchildren are, and so we understand the, the need for security and safety as a, as a foremost priority. I'm not sure what we spend right now. I think our auditor knows pretty well between the SRO officers that we get reimbursed for during the school year, but we pay their salaries during the, the months that they're not at school and the vehicles and everything that, that the county already expends for those resources. If that information is desired, I know that we can make that available to you. Also, we've been on the phone with Pete Flores and Andrew Mer that have both said, we've got funding. The state has funding that nobody ever asks for. And so that may be another piece of this puzzle to reach out to and Jennifer's going to make those numbers, those office numbers available to anybody that would like those. She'll put something together so that we have that resource also. They feel like this is a state funding issue and so they would like for representatives of the school districts to reach out and ask for the money.
May I ask something? I don't know.
Yes ma'am.
So along those lines, we have heard rumor from Pete and others, including Commissioner Moreth, who said yesterday that funding is coming, but we don't know whether that's going to come in districts, whether counties are going to have some of that. So I think that's part of the discussion too, is y'all being a part of that and knowing that you have some of those ends with those elected officials that can help us. We're seeing emails that are different than the ones we're seeing. Things don't necessarily move swiftly with DEA. They think about it, they form a committee and so while we do hope those funds are coming, I think they're going to come more quickly from the state than they may flow through you as opposed to us. So again.
Not only that, but I think with any grant, you know, we, that's how, we were the first school district in Medina County that had a school resource officer. We were the very first in Nataia and that started as a grant, that was 100% to drop to like 75, down to 50, down to zero. And that's when the school district picked up the tab. But you know, like anything else, I think there's hundreds of districts in the state that do not have officers. Obviously they're in their purpose and then they're going to go down the line. And I can assure you that it should be superintendents in this room, they do speak to those same elected officials that they follow reference in Paul, not the same thing as elected official. If you have a solution for school districts in our county or their, their district per se, I'm going to hope they'll come to us also. There's some new information. Like I said, we know that we need help now. You know, we don't know if it's going to be a year or two or three when any of this funding actually comes through. Like I said, with any of these grants, as we all know, there's tons of fine line breed. I'll remind you one other thing, and I think I've mentioned almost every one of you here, I don't know how many folks in this, all I just know is, but when our values go up and our tax base goes up, our social function, so we don't get it. How many of you folks actually realize that, that that's a fact? And you will never understand the number of unfunded mandates that come across the state now with the district that are locally funded.
And additionally to your point of this is a recurring expense. We currently have extra funds that came in with COVID, those are going away and so, you know, they kind of transition to hire teachers, hire staff and then take away funding. The way that we're looking at it is, what can we do today? It gives us the time to figure out. So I have appreciation and understanding that this is a recurring, I think further discussion is even with one year. Then that allows us the time to go after the state, go after whoever we need to to try and get additional funding. So I don't think that we are thinking that we want you to fund this forever. We are looking for what can we do today that makes a difference, that helps kids go back to school and feel safe, that helps parents participate, everybody. We want teachers to be able to be in a classroom and teach. And so in order to do that, we're trying to figure out what happens today and then we're willing to do the work on a state level and national level that gives us that additional funding. So really, I think that's what's important to what you said.
Well, I was about to add that, but I'm not going to air that nobody. This Commissioners Court is probably more pro-fund the police than any Commissioners Court you're ever going to approach. So it's definitely not that. I got that, that letter from Peter Flores, he sent me an article, he called, he thought he was our senator. He was going to come today, but he figured Mr. Gittier is going to be here and he didn't want to settle on no toes since he's not elected officially yet. He sent me that $100 million package that had been in place for two years. This stuff you're talking about Shannon, that they're talking about doing right now is going to be over and above that $100 million. In the meantime, I forwarded it to have contact with Andrew Mer over all weekend and everybody said, well, Commissioner, I'm only seven, five days a week. No, it's not. We do a whole lot on Saturdays and Sundays. Shannon doesn't realize that and I sent her an email this weekend and she sent me emails back. So no, we, we're all involved with this. The $100 million is available. We just got off the phone with Andrew Mer. He said, give out my phone number, they have it, Jennifer's going to have it, we'll help y'all fill out the paperwork. That's a fast start. Instead of waiting for anybody to okay something in Austin, which I know probably never going to take place, only 2.1 million spending here, this has nothing to do with budget whatsoever. We can't use that as budget money. Any money that's going to be coming out that we have to run through budgeting is going to go through y'all. The amount of officers they're talking about, we could be looking at $4 million annually. This isn't a one-time thing, I give you $100,000, $200,000 or a half million dollar and it's overweight. That is not in the budget, that money, that 2.1, is not budget money. The other one says that we had three, 2.23 million dollars reserved. That audit that they had in the paper was from last year, last year.
Okay, so okay, that's what they, what did you say?
There's a whole lot of misinformation that she put in her paper. I tried to straighten it out, you can't straighten her out. And put that on there.
So okay, that, what did you, that's one of the six officers for our district?
No, sir. One officer for six districts, as I just mentioned.
And how many offices is that?
Six total, sir.
I'll call my whole county.
Six total, sir.
Six deputies?
Six deputies total. One for each.
One for each school only. One for each school?
Yes, sir. Not six.
How many, how many schools we got?
Six, sir.
She has eight.
So not individual campuses, sir, it's a school district. One for a school district.
It is, it's one of the, it's not schools.
And then the other one, they want it 36, they want it six for every district.
No, sir. Was that what's, okay, that's what we call fake news, sir.
Fake news too?
Yes.
I think a workshop or a roundtable would probably be in order so that we can get those discrepancies lined up.
I think that would be good and maybe see if we can't get any down here.
Sure.
On that roundtable with y'all.
That'd be awesome. Because we know our town's ownership.
And anything that has to go through the county will, as you will, we expedite that as, as fast as we got the funding. We can't control what the state does, but anything that has to flow through the county, we would certainly.
And then on the next level, talking to our finance attorney, and I think he works for the school group, all schools probably, he don't think this will be done. He said, you can't have two different fundings that the entities paying to a school district. Going back on the school district, we work with Medina Valley. I do half and half. Every single subdivision we have, we have people willing to donate land. We cannot donate land to a school district. Everybody in the Rock hood, a preschool, I think, oh, might be getting close to getting out possibly. This whole county is off of it. They have different laws, but we can't, Larry Cindall won't donate land to a school. Nope. By law, they have to pay, or they call it development, development price equipment. That means no deals. We can't come in and help you and claim them for things we got the same possible here. He was a big brother in that, we had to call him in to deal with this issue, but he thinks it's going to be an issue. Paying straight money and all that. On the next thing, with Senate Bill two, the schools are maxed at 2.5, us county is maxed at 3.5. Last year, we fought to fall, fall, falling off our tax rate down by two tenths and we were, I'm not saying it, at 2.7. Am I close?
Overall?
Overall, about 2.7. Adding another million dollars to this is going to raise our limit as 3.5 up above where it has to go up to board's approval. And that won't be, if we knew we were going to do something today, we might be able to get it all about for Saturday, for, for November to raise our rate above the Senate Bill three under max. And here are very familiar with Senate Bill two and three. We hated it when it hit us here at Commissioners Court. The taxpayers have loved Peter Flores, he's on the audit, where we cannot tax above 3.5. But now here we are, right in the middle of a perfect storm, we deserve a pension. So we have a lot of issues to work through here, legal issues, especially with the funding of the school district. And I think y'all have the expertise to do that, we don't on our end unless we hire somebody to do it. But I think we need to look at, can we do this legally? If we can do it legally, Randy, you're, I believe, what, we charged about 150,000 officer or what is that number? Do you have that number offhand? That's agreement we have with Medina Valley.
Just, just tell it in reverse.
It's a re-merk, but how much, how much is it, like 100,000?
Well, to bring a deputy on a brand new vehicle.
It's a deputy and a vehicle, right?
Well, to bring a, yes. To bring, to bring a brand new deputy on for the county with the money, the 30% that the county puts in and all that stuff and the max down there holds about $130,000.
And that's with a vehicle?
With the vehicle.
And that's about $130,000.
It's $62,000. But normally, hopefully, we're still waiting on vehicles from last budget that came in. So when they do, usually we can, you know, come up with some that are still usable that we can put to the schools because their mileage is not the same as a deputy. So that's what we try to do. I look, matter of fact, driving back from Uvalde the other night, I started checking on COPS grants. And the bad part is there is the COPS grants, but the deadline's June and it's impossible to put those together. COPS grants will allow us to be able to get funding and they're usually two years. So it kind of gets you a startup program that we used to use them here at the county. So we would hire new deputies on the COPS grants and then the county would absorb those whenever they ended. So that would have been a good fit, but I promise you, every grand acter is going to get sucked up so quick because of what has just happened. The other issue is, if today they could, they said, yeah, let's do it, I'll have a really hard time hiring people. I really, yeah. And I don't want someone that's a heartbeat in a school, I want someone that's a badass in the school. Because that's what we need. And then if schools, and I know parents will cringe, if y'all could take those phones with the kids, we wouldn't be running seven search warrants a month on them because she took a selfie and sent it to little Johnny and little Johnny and her broke up and then they airdropped it to everybody in the cafeteria and that's, we need to stop calling SROs, they're not school resource officers. We need police in the schools that can do the job. That's what we need. So if we figure out how to do this, and let me tell y'all, I support you 100%. I don't know where the money's going to come from, but our greatest treasures gather up in those school buildings. And we, you know, there's a lot of money, Monday morning quarterbacking that will go on from, from Uvalde and, and we train hard, we train with the schools, we will come up with programs, we have a guardian training, we continue to do that, stop the lead, all the things that we can do and learn the schools. I envision us having a SRO division countywide and that's really one of my goals. So they train together, they go to different schools together, they can respond to each school, they know what kind of hallways lay out and at some point, I think that will, will happen through the county. Because of the Uvalde and their growth and how they've got it and we've got a, I've got one in Uvalde and I know that, you know, we're going to have to add two of those. I think we need to sit down and we need to have a lot more discussion. I appreciate Eric, whoever decided this was something that should be asked because we've got to do everything we can to make those schools a safe environment for everybody.
And Randy, I think in, in the beginning, what, what was mentioned about the roundtable discussion, I think that's something that needs to be done at each school, where we'd sit down with, with, with the school administrators, somebody from law enforcement, one of us, and look at your weaknesses, shore them up and look at your strengths and, and see what, what needs to change on your end and then see what we can add to this puzzle, what piece we can add to it. If it's, if it's another officer, great. If, if, if we can help shore up your weaknesses or strengthen your, your, your strengths, then, then that needs to be something that's decided in one of those roundtable discussions and then your solutions brought back up here.
Well, the reason that I brought up the deputy other than asking for a handout of the check is real simple, is y'all employ deputies and it's within your budget and a part of your personnel. And so that's why we're not asking just for funding, you're not a funding source. You're an employer and you're a servant of our community. And so unfortunately or fortunately, y'all are over at the sheriff's department, y'all can fund the sheriff's department. And that's why we're not asking for, I mean, we're spending hundreds, lots of money right now trying to finish from our football stadium all around our entire district and add the fencing. We've spent hundreds. all around our entire district, and we spend hundreds of thousands on making sure every one of our doors, we have keyless locks now for every single step, and you can't just go open a door, on and on and on. And there's other things, and then we're gonna continue to do that part. Like I said, the only thing we can't, that we know we can help us with, is a deputy. We know otherwise that is something y'all have the ability to do if it's within reason, and, you know.
Well, my opinion to what I was saying is, is that, I'm finishing my budget up talking today. I need seven more deputies to try to keep these people from ever getting to the schools that are out there on the streets. Uh, I don't know who all's in here, but try to get, I see a couple of subdivision approval, but the road to the county and, and the calls, the number of calls that we have, it's just unbelievable what we can run through, what we deal with. Not to mention the guy that spent probably a million dollars building New Valley with helicopters and all those things, and the border issues that are neglected, that he couldn't travel a little bit further and actually see what was going on on the border. We deal with that three, four, five times a day. So, I don't have enough deputies, y'all are asking for more deputies, and it's all a need.
Okay, Eric, based on that point, that was my next question to you. If they needed four deputies, that could be spot on. Now, Medina Valley comes to us, this board has never turned down a request, never. That was all through the grant, where we have to pay back, we need about two or three ones of that, and you know what? If that's okay with me on my end, could you slide them forward today?
It's tough to even have one that, you know, after New Valley and, and schools still going on here, having a present as long as we could, just to make everybody feel a little more comfortable.
Commissioners, if you know, I'm going to break, the superintendent for Natalia, Eric Post, would like to commend Gilbert and his team on the local law enforcement, because more likely, the locals are always there for me. Gilbert usually calls me before I call him, so just for the public to know that they are reacting and supporting this as much as they can already.
And, and, you know, I would like that because I was getting phone calls the day after from the private schools, trying to find some way to sit watching, very shorthanded, uh, and they made the presents, they did what they could. And my son goes to private school, I go down, my brother's sitting there, he's a sergeant, works for Randy. And these guys look as legal as on top of all of this. So, you know, Randy's shorthanded as it is, but they care, and they worked the butt off for that, everybody. And all of us up here, we're gonna thank you 100% for everything, and thank you to Eric.
Yeah, the last thing, the closing here is, I did have to call some of the other counties, I called Kerr County, I called Paul County. Is it not everybody, they've all, I don't know how big Kerr County is to some of our students, but they got four campuses, three of them are fully police, and the other one is a guardian, uh, up in Hunt, Rainville, one of the, two of the guardians. Uh, I said, we're all having a background, it's big, nothing, and that was yesterday afternoon, I called him. And I asked him, have they police, one of the, he said, I don't know, but they hired their own, they managed their own. Randy, would you sooner have SRO, or would you sooner have them with private police?
Private police?
Well, our own police.
No, I'm, I'm, the one thing with New Valley that some of they have is their own, uh, police department, school district. I mean, it's, it's cruel on that.
But I believe, but in New Valley, they have a police department.
I don't, I don't need anybody that, at a school that calls us when there's a problem. I need somebody in the school that is us, that takes the problems.
I know you.
Well, they, they have, they take the problems.
Well, yeah, that was, that was my question as well.
But the guardian program and that sign that is making the biggest you can, that you do have that, and that y'all are packing because these jackasses are looking for their counters, they look for soft targets, and we don't wanna be soft targets. So, and if you don't have a guardian program, and if you like the guardian program, we will be more than happy to assist you with that. And I think that's probably one of the better things. I think the best thing is, for the schools is, the schools have to be secure. And I've seen schools built after Columbine and different ones, and they continue to build up with all this glass and all this stuff. Schools have to be secure, you get them secure, we can have your person at the front door, and you're good. There's technology that helps out, I look at a video on a school that had devices down the hallway that could always smoke. If they get somebody in the hallway, they can't even see where they're going, they're running into the lockers. But there are a lot of things out there on the technology side, that might be something you're talking about, I don't know. Uh, they're all happening, uh, but I, schools have to be secure, and then you can probably cut down on the number of officers that interview schools. You need a person, a, a deputy, as far as Medina County is concerned. I know other schools in the community and cities have approached us and would like for us to provide that police officer deputy for them, so.
Okay, only friends, you all can use that, they don't think still available, they haven't got paid for our, is that still ongoing for y'all?
No, they're not, once we have, and then, once we have them in the district or all of them.
I believe, I believe, I believe they're gonna get kicked back in from bottom there, and I'll call two, three of them.
They may come under a different, um, name, but we go to.
Yeah, I got a feeling that's gonna be coming back, and I'll call at least eight different elected divisions.
Can we allow the superintendent from the month if he worked in the?
Sure.
One of the things I was gonna bring up, and the guy's Sheriff Brown, he started our guardian program this past August. A member of his, uh, member of his group trained all of us at no cost on the street count, on the weekends, he asked kiddos. They have taken our model, I know they have, sorry, they had a program, Honda, probably, they have one. They've taken the platform that they use for us, along with a parent that is a part of the SWAT team in San Antonio, and they're gonna start reaching out training. So all of the districts involved in this room will train together to eliminate costs, so that may be something that he's gonna, I'd ask him to put that in his budget, maybe he'll know that, because some of his officers are coming for free. I know in June, we were there for 11 hours, it was 101 degrees, and I, I didn't know what it was gonna be, I was there.
And he's fixing to retire.
I said, it's very important, so, uh, you know, Sheriff Brown is not, funding is not a part of that department. He's helping every single one of us in his room accomplish that goal through the garden, just like I said. And there's businesses in town in Devine that have reached out and said, anybody that is in the program, that they need a weapon. I know somebody's in here right now, and he said, well, some of that cost, it's whatever it takes to get this program going. And this is from very intensive stuff that, that they put us through, it wasn't a sign that we'd get a gun, and we're gonna walk down a hall. There were some people that didn't make it, about a quarter of the people that applied didn't make it, so, should have a lot of confidence in this program.
And I will tell you, Natalia ISD and Lyle, I think, Lyle already has an older agenda to look into the guardian program, and that is something the superintendent and I are talking about, potentially putting on our agenda as well.
Do you have something else?
Last thing, Mr. Beck, so to speak to what you talked about, about us putting together a roundtable, one thing I would ask is that as you're planning that, you consider an executive session because there are some very important pieces to the discussion that we cannot say here that, um, would be important to the discussion, that can be said in public, um, for the safety of our staff and children. But if you would consider that rather than just a workshop where we don't have any type of executive session, our ability to be able to speak openly with the sheriff involved about those concerns and how they work into what we're trying to accomplish would be important.
Sure, and I, I did speak to Tony Gonzalez, so I would like to put him along with Andrew Burr, and along with, um, I'm actually.
Mr. Beteris is y'all's a senator right now.
Sir.
Mr. Beteris is y'all's a senator right now. Uh, it looked like the district is gonna change to 24 after Van Waver, but Mr. Ford had one more race to run in November. Uh, like, I don't count, but, too full ahead, but anyhow, I think that I got a feeling that y'all will get a bunch of stuff coming down the road that's gonna help financially, there's nothing else the governor's office can do but help at this one. Uh, you know, like I said, we're all the same old, I got a third grade granddaughter, I love her, that's a big school, and just about anybody that walks on up in the school, walks on in, it's kind of, uh, you're sold, you're off, I said, when you're ready to leave, you know, that's over with, they're gonna, they're gonna have to deal with it. Uh, like I say, I think you can see it in the Commission Court here, they're going back, whatever we get done, but we do have a cradle that we're fighting with, we have a budget we gotta sell, which we haven't even sorted yet. We have taxpayers gonna be upset, and like I say, if this thing reaches 3.5, it's got to go out to the board's income. So that's where we're gonna stand, is, I can say, I'm gonna tell, if we say, well, where's the money gonna come from? Are we gonna add to the tax, or we got to, we can't just get this million or two million dollars, we're gonna be, and that's gonna be, that's, today's the cheapest we're gonna get, it's not gonna come back. Costs for our employees are gonna be going up, I don't know, 11, 12 bucks or not now. Uh, inflation's at eight and a half percent, joining this Commission Court, we, the day we do pay calls, we call to find out what the inflation is. That's pretty much what they're rated, last year was four, we give a little, uh, this year is eight and a half, what do you do, give a climb? Uh, 10%? That's a lot, that's a lot. So, you know, you can look, it's just some of the people literally numbers, look at all the money they got. We are not required, but we try to keep half of a, half the balance of funds or virtue funds. And by the grace of God, well, all our department heads, we have never ran over, never. Randy is one of the most conservative departments we have, and he's the biggest department we have. Uh, we have never ran over, and that's why we have this full imbalance like we have, I don't know where it's gonna be this year, I might even try to guess. But anyhow, we're getting close to that, and I think in the next couple of weeks, and I urge every single one of y'all, please, come to the board, the board of workshops, we put them online, if I need to, we'll put them in the paper. Uh, whatever you need to get, do, we'll post them wherever, please come to our board of workshops instead of waiting until your faculty comes. Last year, we did the same thing with one, one person, so, never saw it again. It's because we trust you. So, you trust our people, absolutely.
Me, these are not real really, I can tell you that.
That's all I got, all I say, Randy, thank you for what you have done, and thank you all the other people for what you're doing in your districts. And, uh, like I say, God bless us, and we're living a crazy, exciting.
Darcy.
Hi, to Commissioner Center's point, I just wanted to briefly say that, I come from Center Point, that's, I graduated from there in Kerr County, and that's where they have their own police department, teen tiny little school, I had the biggest graduating class, that was way back in 98, and it was a class of 40, and they have their own police department, so I know it can happen. You might wanna call Center Point ISD in Kerr County and see how they put together their own police department on a teeny tiny little budget, because they're broke, I promise, my family still lives there, my nieces and nephews go to school there, so maybe call and check with them. Deputy Ernie, I believe, is, is the police chief for them, so, maybe check, we'll do that, he's there.
I think that there's a lot of options, I'm sorry, what do you think?
Um, Deborah Zare from Dennis, I'm a school board member. Small schools have a really tough time, we do have guardianship, but our fear was the best in, is there could be deputies responding to something in Devine, and the response time could get to Dennis' time. And so, my, I would love to be able to have a deputy on campus, but if, this is if you can't do that, give Randy some more where he can kind of zone some people so they're close by, I think that would help tremendously. You know, there's enough time and enough stuff in the different zones to have them closer. I mean, we're maybe, from Hightower, the response time's fifteen minutes, but for Devine, you know, we have a long, long time. And we do have the guardianship program in place, but, you know, the more security we can get, the better off we'll be.
I can tell y'all that whether I get my budget request or not, summer breaks over, school starts up, we will be there. So, and we will spend as much time as we can around the different campuses to, because I know this is gonna be a very emotional, uncomfortable time as we take our kids back into these schools, and, uh, so, we will, we will always be there. And, uh, we will get there as quickly as we possibly can, and sometimes, you know, I, I knew a county commissioner one time running for office and he lost his race because he was honest with people because they wanted to know, you gonna build, uh, build these new roads? He said, no, I'm gonna pass the roads we got, that's what I have money to do. And it's hard for me to sit up there and tell you, I'm gonna be at your house in five minutes, or at your school in five minutes when I could be up on Highway 16. It's a, it's a big county, and you start running from south of Devine to almost Sabine now, or up past the lake, uh, and we cover all of it, so, someday, I'm gonna have enough so I can divide the county into four different quadrants, and they'll all have their districts they work in, and I will take them around so they know everybody, and, but, but the summer's over. You know, and we talk about talking, and I just get tired of talking, you know, this roundtable thing, uh, how quickly can we make that happen? That depends on those people, uh, because we talk, and talk, and talk, but we never do anything, we just talk. So, we need to stop talking with deputies, so, that's all I got.
I guess.
Thank you, Governor.
This is an emotional issue, an emotional time, and I appreciate everybody keeping that in check as much as you possibly can.
We all want to ask guys if y'all can let us know, number one, at the roundtables, number two, when that would be, and then number three, decision, so then we can base our decisions and our future planning and our future budgeting on what happens here, so.
I, I know the judge, you all would like to be here this morning, and so I know that he would like to be involved in the discussion, so in terms, we can.
Eric, if the Natalia ISD decides to have one of their own, I'm more than happy to come. If Devine ISD decides to have one, I'd be more than happy to come. I would be even more happy to bring this officer that Randy's talking about, he, uh, he doesn't pull any punches. And he, uh, tells you like he is, and, you know, you may not feel very comfortable when he's around talking to you, but he's honest and he's straightforward, but I would be more than happy to sit in if you have one, uh, Nancy, say that.
I appreciate that, I, my preference would be we all meet together. Uh, I think it's an important, I know that's a lot to bring everybody together, but that would be my preference, is that we meet collectively.
You know, I'm, in the interest of, of time and, and substance, I think that if, if we meet, if you have one individually that pertains to Natalia, and you have one that pertains to, to Medina Valley, and then we can, and see what, we've got common interests in common, and, and work on those, and, and then ratchet it to the, the other avenues that, that you brought forward.
Yes, sir.
I, I think that the individual discussions will be a help, as well as the group discussion.
Thank you, sir.
And as being honest, well, there, I think Jennifer, can you get a message that they for elected officials?
She might.
Everybody got my phone number?
We have it, thank you, Larry. We're on them, we're on them all the time.
If you don't have it, Jennifer can get that, but not right now, just give her a call to give her a chance to get that information around to the employees.
As a matter of fact, it's already, calls, we'll be able to make work.
Thank y'all very much, for coming, and those of y'all over here for that agenda item, like I said, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to make your way out, I won't be that kind.
Be more fun than one thing.
We're gonna move ahead now to slide number 14. Discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval of the on-play with the Tranquil subdivision unit two located precinct two off of the Tranquil Road. Is there anybody here?
I'm here.
I'm here, uh, my name is Laura Lynn, I have a few questions I'd like to ask, and other than.
Are you ready?
I am, I have a few questions.
I guess, are you in, are you in? Are you in, are you in?
I'm in.
NPR.
So, in, in, they're, they're doing the subdivision next to us.
Next thing, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was, uh, I've been through these subdivisions, they are so not formally being built off. I think they're gonna come, I think they already did with the others, rented, with the other lots. But anyhow, for the end, for the end play, this. But anyhow, for the end, for the end play, this is the dark hole. Commissioner Newman and I visited them, we took a couple of elected officials from Catville, all their children, these dark holes. These things are packed and bent and up and they have a dozen available. There are seven packs that they give them. Uh, they got another second part of this subdivision, I think it's another twenty-six or twenty-eight that we got on there?
Seven or two lots.
So, so, and that's where we're gonna be on panel today and, uh, I'm ready to move forward, we'll let them have their actually, and I'll have, or, or. So I will make a motion that we approve the preliminary for the end play with the Tranquil Oak subdivision located precinct two.
You got a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen, discuss and take possible action on Hunter's Ranch Phase Three, category three, if you want extension, located precinct two off of Tranquil Road.
The sample of this area is a hundred ranch, it's a back fence segment, uh, I'll stick it together, I think, I'll say, say the same thing, two minutes in the room, but anyhow, uh, I'm ready to okay that approval and that's what finishes out to the back fence line, I believe. Yeah, that's one, if you want. I will make the motion to approve the Hundred Ranch Phase Three, category three or extension, in precinct two off of nineteen fifty-seven. This extension is what we went in and watched with, uh, the developer, he put in an eighty-six foot boulevard, Tranquil Road, all the way to the Hayley Ranch. It's gonna be a major route where we're trying to hit down, I would not be sure.
Chirp Ranch.
No, no, we're gonna, three eight one though. This here will, I would not be.
Oh, you don't have that.
Got it. Uh, three eight one, one of those is gonna be called, to do it. So I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item sixteen, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of a maintenance bond number four, four, five, three, three, five, three for Hunter's Ranch subdivision units nine and eleven located precinct two. I believe this is probably, it's worded maintenance bond, but it's probably a performance bond.
It's, no, this is a maintenance bond.
So this works.
This, this is in the E G data San Antonio, for San Antonio takes maintenance for one year and then the bond, the maintenance bond after that, the county, it goes from two years, uh, two years after San Antonio, it's through a one year. This is already now okay through the city of San Antonio. It comes through us through formality and to give us for maintenance bond. They are not passing work for farm bond.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item seventeen, discuss and take possible action on final approval of Hunter's Ranch subdivision units nine and eleven located precinct two. You gonna table that one?
Okay.
Okay.
Again, this is ranch through San Antonio, they did not have San Antonio's approval according to the female identity.
Item number eighteen, then. Discuss and take possible action on final approval, Vane Ranch subdivision, units one and two located precinct two.
You can have paper copies in front of me on this. Unit one is three sheets, uh, unit two is, uh, just on the, that is the retirement community for the subdivision. Uh, in that absence, Jennifer has all my large, I want to say that you're missing, uh, we consider to, uh, bed, according to that, back. Um, as was presented before, unit one, uh, is more typical county subdivision, uh, minimum eight blocks. Unit two, uh, I appreciate, we're on this, it's the retirement community, second security aid, will plating four separate blocks, fifty-six through fifty-nine. You should, those represent the homeowner association, uh, through the Russell, there's documentation, uh, we create those and, uh, within those, then you have a home size that will count on.
Okay, I'm having a pause, okay, in front too.
Yes.
So that one, you have, I'm, I'm holding it for the duty. They hold their subdivision up. Okay, like I said, this has been and been gone for a while. I appreciate you staying with us, hold on. I appreciate Mr. Jefferson for going through the strength they put in on this subdivision. If you wanna see a subdivision supposed to be put together, please don't take a look.
What? I've got the opposite side of the table.
They done one fantastic job from heck no, uh, I couldn't have asked for a better month to be working on this thing. Uh, like I say, that we've been from one extreme to another. And all I can tell you want, carry your weapon in the homes. Got a motion? Got a motion?
On second.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion?
I believe we're gonna have a prayer of hope, hopefully, during this year.
Uh, thank you, I have, uh.
Uh, bond, bond, the dirt rental?
I don't want a prayer, I'm not gonna sell a home.
Sure, no. We don't call nobody.
But I don't wanna say one thing, for all the those stairs up and down that road, you had Richard, he called, he was like, well, Mike, you know, the safe, there was a guy, he offered him eighty-nine hundred and eighty, he was gonna put a trail up here. That's the reason I was nine thousand dollars into it and spent three million dollars doing one of them. And with all this saved, couple of regrets, one thing back to the, Randy said that sixty-two thousand dollars for a vehicle on that hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The thing the county's been good to me, I mean, I paid a lot of money, but he later not, my auction business out, the whole thing, that's my money. But if they just need that vehicle to go from home to that school and set that vehicle there, you know it was out of the, we can go Corpus Christi and buy somebody's hundred thousand mile Crown Vic for three to five thousand, I'll buy one forever school dish out of our money. If that's legal.
Well, thank you for looking.
Let's vote on this motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mark. We're gonna go back to number seventeen. My understanding, Commissioner Sitters, you're not gonna be here next court, so can we approve this contingent upon San Antonio during their approval?
Like I said, it, it, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and okay it, but it's not gonna go okayed until it gets through San Antonio anyhow.
Right.
And I won't be here the next meeting.
Let's, let's approve it on the contingency that San Antonio's approval comes through.
Okay, I will, okay, go back to seventeen, I will make the approval of Hundred Ranch subdivision unit nine and eleven, precinct two, after approval from San Antonio. How's that?
That works. We got a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you for that. Item nineteen, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of a construction bond for Valley Oak subdivision, phase one located in precinct one. This is another one that I'm not sure, construction bond is the right terminology, that may be a performance bond.
Construction on the roadways and stuff.
So, they aren't constructed, so they're putting forth a bond to save the, we call that a performance bond, or I guess they call it what it is.
It is a performance.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Uh, Dan, I'm just, I'm just here if you guys have any questions, this is the new meeting, uh, it's, uh, I'll, I'll, you guys are gonna talk about it in the first and then we'll talk about some last ones.
Yes.
So I'm delivering the numbers under the, uh, construction cost of, three quarters of the money, so the request is twenty-five percent more, so hand up the over a million dollars, so that satisfies. Forward, so I'll make the motion.
I'll take it.
Motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty, discuss and take possible action on final approval of the Valley Oaks Ranch subdivision phase one located precinct one.
Everything, we trust standards, we did have a discussion, uh, last week, uh, he upgraded the storage facility for the, uh, just, I think I was a guy for a part of the use, uh, and who it is, he made, it's only a lot, that way, that existing lot, the well was on, according to that was also, they were not allowed that lot to have a well, I mean, there was a well in that lot, and so we took that lot out and made that lot, it's still over five acres, so it still needs our department. So, and everything, does it meet our rules, so I make the motion to approve the final, uh, phase one, Valley Oaks subdivision.
I'll take it.
Motion in the second, any other discussion?
Is there one or one entrance?
There's, there is a second entrance, it's a, it's not a manlock, it was locked around him, so it becomes the best position for him to stay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Dan.
Item number twenty-one, discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval to vacate and replat of lots four oh seven to four oh nine, Valentine Ranch Phase One.
Would you take it for a real grid of those?
Yes, yeah. Um, I'm, uh, again, you should have our copies on that as well, uh, pretty straightforward, just combining two blocks into one larger block, I can't get anything else on that.
You're right, you're right, Dan.
I made the motion, uh, we approve preliminary, we need to have a block, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Sorry. Motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twenty-two, discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval to vacate and replat lots fifteen to seventeen, San Martin's Hill subdivision, unit two located precinct one.
Also have that one. Uh, maybe this is just reconfiguring the existing lots, uh, both will still have road runners exactly the way they do now. Seventeen, uh, will become seventeen A and still below thirteen and a half acres after the replat, so, uh, just reconfiguring, thanks for the individual support.
From three lots to three lots.
Uh, yeah, lot sixteen, uh, in the middle is not being changed, uh, this only affects fifteen and seventeen, which would be got fifteen and eight and seventeen A.
And, uh, I'm leaving the motion to approve.
I'll take it.
Motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Mark. Item twenty-three, discuss and take possible action on renewal of property insurance with Texas Association of Counties.
We have to table that, there was an error in the invoice and the downrange recommendation, but I need to reevaluate, I just have the invoice for the Frank line up.
Okay.
Um, we dropped it pretty fairly.
Okay.
I think we should review the invoice for Frank.
I'll take it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, David. Item number twenty-three, we go on to item four, discuss and take possible action on approval of automated external refurbulator program for the Gena County offices.
I think that would be a lot of, are okay.
Very good.
That was nice.
Can we try it?
Can we try it, Larry?
It's funny, they show you that, I don't purpose them, I'm still waiting on a few and, uh, program, and you all have copies, we have a question.
Fantastic, we'll see you later, I don't know.
Did you demonstrate it, Larry?
I know what I'm talking about.
No? Go check it for both first.
Trish, are you gonna have like a, a pass on this? Are you planning on having it in the building?
So on page six of the program, I have where all the areas will be located, and then we'll be going to, we'll read here, and then we'll be going to Castroville, NX, and Klein NX, and Tranquil NX.
Okay, great.
So we'll get you signed up in the next couple of weeks.
Any questions for the program?
Maybe we'll see if we approve it.
I'll take it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item twenty-five, discuss and take possible action on adoption of order to prohibit or restrict the sale or use of restricted fireworks defined as skyrockets with sticks and missiles with fins.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, if you, you have an order asking that you would approve this to, uh, do a ban on skyrockets with sticks and missiles with fins, uh, are dropping the data, this is the first time we've actually done this in one season, uh, but as you all know, from our experience with the fires this year, this exceptional drought conditions, uh, our current index, we have an average of six eighteen, I have a high of six ninety-two, and that is below us, uh, so it's still very, very dry and, uh, I think the end needs is, uh, the smart thing for us to do. Uh, this order we do have to take effect now and it would expire, um, on July the twelfth, which coincides with the ending of the burn ban that we currently have. Uh, this, if we get rain between now and fourth of July, we can, uh, do a wait with the word, uh, but it gives us, unfortunately, we have fifteen as the last date of when we decide if we wanna do it or not. So my recommendation is that we, uh, do, uh, the prohibition on, this will also be in line with Bear County, they're doing the same, uh, which also means the sale, uh, which I think is good, people buying in Bear County, whatever they're buying over there is the same as, apply that to us as well, so, could be confusion on these.
Do you not know what we enacted that last one round, that they pulled the last hundred days, that number is being posted yet?
Is that's, is July twelfth, that one, the D that we have?
That, that was, that is the ninety days.
So we have this, uh, the same date expiring as the burn ban?
I, I make a recommendation to put, put a burn ban in motion on our, rocket method of where we're going.
We have a motion in the second.
There's nothing that's wrong with it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Motion carries. Item twenty-six, empty. Discuss and take possible action on a resolution authorizing the county judge to submit a request to the Texas Comfor for unplanned money from electric cooperative. This is an ongoing, it's a standing, it's a, it gets to go to the counties if we ask for it, it's not a, not a given, but we put in our request in case.
Well, we authorize the county judge's request to go to Comfor for unplanned money.
Take it.
Motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twenty-seven, discuss and take possible action on approval of a quote from Tyler Technologies for setup and configuration transition to full broadness in the sheriff's office.
Paper.
Paper, okay. Twenty-eight, what about the other software?
Five.
The key just walked out.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
We have a quote from Tyler Technologies, item eighty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Here on to twenty-eight.
I'm up.
Discuss and take possible action on approval of a quote from Tyler Technologies for fire program interface software.
Yes, sir, this is, um, if you all, we use Tyler Technologies with our cash, um, interface at the sheriff's office and, um, all the fire departments in the county, they're required to do their reporting to the state for different types of fires, so currently they, um, have to call and dispatch and get all their information, time, generation dispatch, and Tyler has the ability to drop this into, it's called fire program, all the, one of the fire departments currently do fire programs, and this takes and automates the process, it literally drops information all the time, and they're, they're doing this, and we're in my call, and drops it into the system, so eliminates mistakes, not the mention for all the, all the faring, this is, hold on, I can try to get the recording back into the system. So, the, um, the, the amount is six thousand eight hundred or something, six, sixteen, seventy-five? Six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, and then we have the ongoing handle, which the, uh, participating E S Bs, uh, gotta agree that they would, um, take care of that, um, it was thirteen hundred, thirteen, 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 seventeen? Thirteen, seventeen-five, and so we do e-dispatch from them, which is a dispatching system, the, the county case part, that gave a big reduction in cost, they'll each agency, and so we would just bill down this accordingly as part of the building that we're on, e-dispatch to our handlers. And, um, so I recommend that it's something we do for them, if we need a big officer who's all of them and accuracy and helping the sheriff's office, just, it's more calls and not coming in, it's a bit of time, it's not, we're just gonna try and answer any calls and take care of them.
Okay, what is up with the bottom one, that version, or my bad, or is it, uh, dispatch order, or you're, we work on something different than that one?
Uh, that's different, that's a different deal, this, this helps us in the dispatch center, it's not taking calls and when there are critical calls, it's very, the times and stuff, so it's very helpful for us to run off in dispatch center, but as far as, you know, the, 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 it's just, it's part of the CAD, they're collecting information, they're just going to fire and tag the time, this one's going to tag the time, the call started here, the call ended here, all of that information, that was automatic. call started here, the call ended here, all that information comes automatically into their reporting system, that they then just fire off to the state, but, I mean, very little, they have a little bit of stuff that they have to do, where they take this all out.
Yeah, well, here's a little stuff, I was calling from Frank, but about nine one one, they said, we just upgraded nine one one, two years ago, they said, it's already.
We have, nine one one is another, she goes back again, but she doesn't really.
Okay, that's another deal.
It's a whole other deal with the nine one one upgrade, it's, uh, I think it's maybe more, it's your, uh, it's not for under here, so.
I'll move to approve the quoting Tyler Technologies to the fire, fire program interface.
Okay.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to correct the name on the Alon, which we, we have to be prepared.
Okay.
Dog is Frank Lina, not, we're at Frank Lina law school.
Okay. You need a motion for that?
Yes. Yes, that you approved the type of dog. Well, I'm.
I'll move to approve that.
Yes, I'm pretty good.
Okay. We got a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, David. Uh, item twenty-nine, discuss and take possible action on approval of renewal of web publishing agreement, number eighteen thirty-three sixty-four, from Patron Act, this is our own book, most of it is, uh, online, but we do still get a few hard copy books for our lawyers and judges to use, so this is a ongoing.
I'll move to approve the renewal.
I'll agree with that.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to table item number thirty. Move on to item thirty-one, discuss and take possible action on approval of TK elevator agreement for maintenance of the courthouse and annex elevator, or is it courthouse and annex, or courthouse annex?
Courthouse annex.
Courthouse annex, these elevators here.
I'll move to approve.
I'll agree with that.
Got a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number thirty-two, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of resignation of Pamela Mathis for ESD one.
I'll move to approve or accept the resignation.
Second.
I'll agree with that.
Yeah, we have a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirty-three, discuss and take possible action on appointment of Larry Farron, ESD one, to fill that vacancy.
I'll share it up. Let's vote.
I will make that, all those in.
I will make that vote.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Got a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirty-three, discuss and take possible action on appointment of Ginny Farron, wait a minute, thirty, sorry, thirty-four, public hearing, so we're going to open a public hearing at eleven twenty-four, to receive comment on placement of stop signs at the intersection of County Road seventy-four twenty-one and County Road seven thirty-two, located in precinct three, is there anybody here to talk on that, on that issue? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at eleven twenty-five, and move on to item thirty-five, discuss and take possible action on order for placement of stop signs at the intersection of CR seven four twenty-one and CR seven thirty-two. It's in my precinct, uh, it had stop signs already, there was a fatality, an accident down toward Yancy, not due to misplacement of signs, or something else, somebody just ran the stop signs and, and, uh, caused a bad collision, had several requests from people to try to make that spot safer, it's, it's got some bad visibility, and they replaced it, just went ahead and made the four-way stop, so that's what we're trying to do, if, if people are going to run stop signs, there's no way to fix that, but this may help people just to approach it a little bit more caution, so, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the placement of stop signs, additional stop signs at the intersection of seven four twenty-one and seven thirty-two.
Right.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You might want to correct the designation and installation of County Road two forty-one in precinct one.
Okay. I'm not sure what we're talking about, but.
The top, in, oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, so looking at my incident list, okay, yeah, we can fix that, that would be great. Thank you, David, for picking that. Okay, item number thirty-six, discuss and take possible action on approval of change orders and other matters regarding the construction of the courthouse annex and jail addition. This is another list of things that were left out, omitted, or whatever, that our contingency fund is taking care of, that has gone over to Gary, Gary is advocating in our behalf, and we've gotten the contractor to pay for half of some of these things, um, he informed me that they are getting requests from our contractor to upgrade certain items, and just coming up with good ideas, and, and he's not too good either, but saying, oh, not really, just because of your life, but, kind of, twisting the rattle, just trying to get a little more money out of this, because I think, um, it's any more than that. But, this is another list of, of, of things that we've been improving that are covered by contingency, so I make the motion to approve the change orders to run the construction of the courthouse annex and jail addition.
Okay.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's it, for the agenda items, so, court member, now.
Uh, we received a whole group yesterday, we reduced its date, we have improved running, and, uh, time doesn't stay for a whole crew, it's amazing, and John Partick will be there as a man, and they're looking to help.
All right, we're generating that just a little bit here, we picked this thing around on the sheriff's, that actually part of, about three, four, five, six years ago, about getting the unit, and so, all the others, it was a lot of crap, and the commission board jumped on board on getting all this to weapon, it was a lot of money, but all I can tell you, we are going to be a leader, and the quality of work we're putting out, and the time we're saving, where it used to take us yesterday, I have a roof now, at ten thirty, I got out at eleven thirty, and I wanted to go watch the new change order right down the street, so I get there, there wasn't a stolen site, I seen some paper, but it, I said, this couldn't be ours, so I called the foreman, and I said, when are you going to do the papers, and they were, come through, we're going back to yard, and that, generally, we're taking a crew, before working with them, breaking it down, people they can get hamburgers, when we have somebody out there, they were through with a lot of work two and a half hours, and I can't thank the rest of these commissioners, what we have put together to gather in commission order today, if we'd done this ten years ago, I think they would have broken down these things, I read it, uh, but like I say, we're coming up to let it in, and I'm going to be here to make sure our sheriff is what he needs, and whatever this department, to not slow down, to keep moving forward, as we are putting out results. That's all I got. Thank you all for being so welcome.
Thank you, precinct three, it's working hard.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then we will stand and adjourn, thank you all very much for coming. Goodnight, gentlemen.